All right, we'll call the committee to order. The records show it's six thirty-two P M. Please rise for this likely.
Alleged allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local? Crave here.
Quammy here.
Ari Chris Schneider.
You're here too.
I'm here.
That's Eric. All right, full board attendance. I do have in front of me proper verification and proper meeting notices being posted. Brings us to the actual agenda, any changes or additions to the agenda this evening? There and I'm. Look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda posted.
A motion by Mr. Set seconded by Mr. Yurgis, who approved the agenda as posted, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries on a seven on voice vote. Uh, rolling right into the action of approving the minutes from the policy committee meeting on December eleventh. Any noted changes here?
I'll move to approve those meeting minutes as presented.
I will second.
Got a motion by Ms. Quammy, seconded by Mr. Crave, to approve the minutes from the policy committee meeting on December eleventh as presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries seven on voice vote. Right this to the minutes from the regular meeting of December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, any other corrections here or changes?
I'll, I'll so move for approval.
On the second paragraph, I've got a, just spelled my name wrong, D S E T U C, not D S.
Uh-oh. Sorry.
That's close.
Okay. I'll second. So, I've got a motion by Mr. Crave to approve, assuming that motion includes the suggested correction of the name change. Yes?
Yes.
And Mr. Yurgis will second that?
Yes.
So, all those in favor of approving the regular meeting minutes from December thirteenth with a noted correction, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries on a seven on voice vote. Bring this to the meeting minutes from the regular meeting on December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, closed session. Any noted changes here?
I'll so move for approval.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Crave, seconded by Ms. Quammy, to approve as presented for the closed session, eighty minutes up to December thirteenth, all those in favor? Close, motion carries on a seven on voice vote. Moving right along, we'll get to the board reports and we'll start first with our student representative, Mateo. If you have the floor, sir.
All right, so since the last board meeting starting right before break, we had the holiday week and we had many competitions. I had a lot of fun, I know a lot of other people had a lot of fun. It was fun to watch, fun to be a part of. And in fourth place for the competition was the freshmen, third were the seniors, second were the sophomores, and the juniors took first. For the scheduling meetings that have started to happen recently, maybe class level meetings have happened and the scheduling process has started with Skyward now being available. For the gearing up high school event, that happened on Monday. Eighth grade students learned about high school, registered for class, but I did notice a higher percentage of parents being there instead of the actual students. So maybe next year, trying to encourage more students to go instead of just their parents. All right, so the sophomore class is hosting a chili supper next Thursday before the boys' basketball game. So, all is interested and the last couple of years have been good, so this year probably will as well. Ms. Burns is hosting a practice ACT next Friday for all juniors at twelve, from twelve to three-thirty in her classroom. If you have any juniors, I personally highly recommend to attend, it was very helpful to me. And it was, it is something I would like to see continue. Other than that, winter sports, boys' basketball is currently three and seven. Wrestling has been doing well, I don't have the exact numbers for that, but I have heard that several of them are doing well. Girls' basketball is seven, seven and one. So, other than that, again, the term is next week and there's just normal final stuff with that, other than that. Any questions?
No, any questions? Thank you, Mateo.
Thank you.
Uh, brings us to the policy committee meeting of December eleventh, and Mr. Crave would you the short strata to speak on that maybe?
Well, we reviewed the seven thousand policies. We did not have our representative from Neolia with us. He is now the executive director of Neolia. There is three or four of them that we pulled out for further review. I don't have all of those highlighted, I did review some of that this afternoon. Brian, you?
Yeah, the ones in your packet that are marked up, we pulled out for further review. Um, like Charlie said, and we noted in your board packet that they're, that Scott took over as executive director for Neola. So, we've had a hard time getting him on the schedule. We, we did schedule with him today, three meetings coming up over the next five to six weeks. So, um, we're gonna get those answers for you and then finish the last three sections, hopefully by the end of February.
Great, any questions? Yes, Mr. Set.
Why did you pull them all, is it the terminology of laws changed, or why did you pull them?
We, certainly other committee members can talk, my version of that is we, much of the requested clarifications or additions to those policies, we had to get them to align with all the policies that we have met. There's some on webinars, uh, some on social media. We're trying to give things to align, uh, as better interpretation.
And some of them reference as pol, reference policies we haven't reviewed yet. So, like there were comments that said refer to policy five thousand, whatever, and we've done that packet yet. So we felt like we couldn't, if we're conscious bringing that, knowing that we couldn't refer you to that policy that was referencing.
Yeah, so in short, they're, they're not done yet, June. So you will see them coming to you at a later date. They just weren't done, so that's why they're not for approval tonight. Yep.
All right, any other questions? Moving right along, administrative reports. We'll start with Mr. Bartel with gearing up for high school. Oh, we gotta turn it up a little bit.
Try it again, Sean.
Was that, that sound better?
Still a little light. Hang on.
It might be on our end. I've been trying to make this sound better. Now try it again, Sean.
Was that some better?
Better.
Perfect. All right, I know, but you know, we touched down in three, two, that's one of the topics, we're talking about that gearing up for high school event that we hosted this past Monday. Um, this is the third year that we have done this event and we evolve each year, learning more and getting feedback from um, families and students of all the events. We had about a seventy-five percent turnout of eighth grade students and their families at this event. We tried to communicate it hard, um, early December, a couple of reminders and again, uh, when we return from break. And it's a really important meeting, we really do hit hard on high school expectations, talk about all the classes that we have to offer at the high school, not only their freshmen here, but also as they move on through high school. So it's, it's a lot of information, I know some of the board members were there because they have eighth grade students. So it is a plethora of information, a lot to kind of digest. We do have students at that event register, write down the classes they would like to take as freshmen. And again, that's a lot of stuff going on and we stress that if there are changes that need to be made, just reach out to myself or Mr. Quokelye. But, but again, it was a really good turnout, I was, I was pretty happy with it, especially with the, the cancellation yesterday. So it was Monday night and we had that cancellation. So, we had a good, a good turnout. And then the second part of that event is the kind of co-curricular fair that we like to call it. We had eighteen co-curriculars, coaches, students, current high school students, and they are able to, they all the table, they talk about their activity, their sports, or their club. And students put their name down so that we have an interest of students that want to join those activities. It allows our coaches and advisors to reach out to them, whether it's, uh, this summer because it starts early fall or next year when the school year starts, to see if those students are still interested in doing something next school year. So it's a great event, I know it's, it's early, it's early January that we're talking scheduling, but we start this process because the scheduling process at the high school takes about a month and a half to two months. And we want to get everything solidified, um, middle of March in order to have a schedule and allow schedule changes to happen before the summer begins. So it's a long process. Those of you that were there, hopefully you enjoyed it and learned a little something. But all in all, got some, just, I had some feedback from families and some things we can, we can adjust for next school year. So it's a, it's a fun event and, um, very informative for our students and families.
Any questions for Mr. Bartel? Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move to Ms. Zeeman to hear about Act Twenty and the financial literacy curriculum updates.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so I wanted to take this opportunity to keep you updated on the things that are coming out of DPI and are being shared in my, um, my curriculum meetings with directors from across the state. So in regards to Act Twenty, DPI has created the Council on Early Literacy and is in the process of creating the Office of Literacy as part of that act. The Council on Early Literacy consists of nine members and their role is to annually recommend to DPI science-based literacy curricula and instructional materials for use in grades K three. The DPI will then submit that curriculum and materials recommendation to the Joint Committee on Finance for passive review. So the publishers are currently submitting materials to the council and they're actively reviewing, um, the curriculum that has been submitted. They're using a five-question rubric that's going to measure materials in nine different areas, including comprehension, building background knowledge, vocabulary building, oral language development, phonological awareness, phonics, spelling, writing, and fluency. The materials that we use currently in the elementary, Wonders by the Brown Bill have been submitted to the council and are currently being reviewed. Because of our curriculum adoption process that we use, we already know that Wonders contains all of these elements and we have every confidence that, um, they will find that our materials meet that criteria. The Office of Literacy will also oversee the literacy coaching program and more information is coming out on that. Uh, DPI is going to be contracting with sixty-four literacy coaches to work with public schools, charter schools, and private choice schools across the state. And those literacy coaches will provide support to school administrators, school-based literacy coaches, principals, and teachers to build capacity to read, or to teach reading using science-based early literacy instruction. Half of those coaches will be placed by DPI in schools and the other half, schools will be able to apply for, um, literacy coaches to come and assist them. And that process has not been, uh, put out yet, but we will watch for that. Um, another bill that was, um, passed is Assembly Bill One-O-Nine, and that is now called Wisconsin Act Sixty. And this bill requires that, starting with the two thousand twenty-eight graduating class, a pupil must complete at least point five credits of a personal finance literacy class in order to graduate from a school district. So, Mr. Bartel and I, along with Ms. Gills, are going to be talking about how this requirement will be incorporated into the graduation requirements for the students of Waterloo. So those are a couple of the things that I wanted to keep you updated on.
Are any questions for Ms. Zeeman? Thank you, Christine. We'll move to Ms. Beekin to talk about teacher professional development for Act Twenty. Do you have the floor?
There, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, yeah, like Christine says, Act Twenty really affects our elementary teachers the most. It's a, it's a law, um, for pre-K through third grade. And one of the components, there are lots of different components, and the DPI is still working out, as the DPI does. They're working out all of their, all of the templates and things like that to help us out. And they're change, it's still a little bit of ever-changing sort of, um, process at the DPI. But one of the things that we're gonna be focusing on, or that I want to focus on, is the part of the process where we need to provide our K through third grade teachers with, um, instruction in reading. So the DPI has a, has a list of, of programs and professional development classes, if you will, courses that are approved. And using some of our motion fifty-seven money, we tried really hard to find, um, programs for teachers that fit kind of both bills. And one of them that we found, and I'm gonna try to share my screen so you can see the one that we're thinking of, um, for our teachers, which is called Keys. And it has those nine components that Christine was talking about of the science of reading and the different reading components that that the law that wants, it wants to make sure that our, um, curriculum has in it. So, um, I'll share my, can we do the works, fingers crossed? Here. Can you see that? Right in that? Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Ooh, parade for me. So this was, um, this is one of the programs, the professional development that we're using, that we're gonna be using for our teachers. I'm really excited about it, it has all of the key components to, of any recent course, or, you know, read the basics, oral language, all of those things. Comprehension, fluency, vocabulary, phonics, word study, everything we need. We're going to be using option two, which is the online course. We're gonna sign up our teachers in June, by the end of June, and then give them the rest of the summer and all of next school year to kind of finish the course. This course, it is about thirty-six hours, um, total in the modules. So it's, it's a big, it's a big commitment from our teachers and from all the teachers in Wisconsin. So, some modules last like one point, five hours to seven point five hours, depending on the module. But we want to give our teachers plenty of time and we want to be sort of ahead of, of, of the curve. One of the things that we did talk about was offering our teachers after completion of the course. So they would have all the summer and all next year, and when they complete the course, we, um, are going to be offering them, um, a stipend for the time that they're working. And I think, um, we were talking about using the summer school, kind of our daily rate stipend for summer school, and using, um, that formula as a pair teachers when they complete the course. Sharing. All right, do you have any questions for me about, about what we know so far?
Any questions? Not hearing any.
All righty. I'll keep you posted as far as like all the other components and as we kind of work through everything, we'll keep you guys informed so that you know what, what's going on with Act Twenty. All right?
Thank you, Holly.
Thanks.
Brings us to Ms. Arman Schaub to talk about special education open enrollment recommendations.
All right, good evening, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect, um, I'm gonna jump in and also present my screen or give it a, give it a try anyway. Did that work?
Uh, nope. Not yet, Arman Schaub.
All right. Oh, because I contributed, you got it.
There we go.
All right, there we go, thank you. All right, so, um, I'm here to talk to you about the space determinations for special education. And just to give you an overview of what we're moving towards, um, our process for determining special ed, open enrollment, and space availability, um, is having me reviewing each, um, special educator and related service providers' current caseload, um, as well as look at the projected enrollment to determine workload. Um, then if the teacher or related service provider's projected workload is above the board's workload recommendations, then no space will be available to provide, um, the type of special education or related service for the next school year. So just a, a word on caseload versus workload. Um, it's, a lot of times in the past, caseload was determined, um, or used as the major factor in determining, um, space availability. Caseload is the number of students, so every student counts as one. Whereas workload, we look a little bit broader, we started using this process last year. We look broader at all of the responsibilities required of the special education teacher. And it's also based on the severity of the student needs. So again, um, I mentioned last year, DPI gives no recommendations on caseloads. So when, when looking at a workload, we consider the following. The amount of services, um, that are directly required as well as indirectly required, uh, the intensity of the student needs, and then the various, um, staff that needed to, to support that student. So that could be our speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, and then the support staff repair professionals. So, um, spoiler alert, I'm, I'm gonna be recommending no seat availability in any area, but I do want to take a moment just to tell you, um, why that is and how I came up with that recommendation. So again, using workload, um, to determine our, you know, level of availability, um, focusing on that student needs approach, um, to caseload is, is advantageous because we're finding that balance between the intensity of the student needs as well as the teacher responsibilities. When we make sure that our teachers have reasonable workloads, um, we are, have been making sure that we are following, um, fate. And then again, when we think about recruiting and retaining special educators and, and other staff that are used to support some of our highest-reading students, um, making sure that the workloads are appropriate and manageable, um, is very important. So again, the way that I do this, um, I just wanted to really quickly walk you through. I use a service matrix analysis for each student that receives special education. At each grade level, I look at the projected enrollment. Um, I look at each IEP and the direct service minutes. Um, and then I look at the total caseload to determine the level of need. So just to, to kind of show you when these are, um, attached to, um, your agenda minutes. The service matrix I use there takes into account the curriculum needs for the student, the instructional needs for the student, um, the communication and planning that it takes when communicating with families, other service areas, and regular education teachers. And then it also looks at student behavior, health needs, and safety needs. After going through each student's IEP and categorizing, uh, then they, they receive a service matrix score, um, to help us determine that level of need. Then we consider projected enrollment, so obviously we're looking at how many students are we currently serving. And then I go past, uh, the last three to four years of historical data to determine how many students we usually, um, add to our caseload in that grade level band. I look at the referrals that are currently in progress and then I look at our notes, um, from our collaborative meetings for students that are on the radar for potentially being, um, uh, asked to be evaluated. And then within your packet, you basically have my data worksheet, um, that has each student listed. There's for how many staff we have, um, available for that grade level band, um, as well as the direct number of minutes that are needed. And then finally, what we support staff will we need, um, to help support in that grade level. And, um, after going through all of that, uh, right now we're at, I would recommend at capacity and would not recommend any additional, um, open enrollment seats for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Any questions? I know that's kind of a lot, and then, a bit fast.
Any questions for members? Well, you explained it well enough, there's no questions, Michelle.
I tried, thank you.
Thank you. Brings us to Ms. Gould, and she'll talk about the change in our auditor for the district.
Yeah, so, um, we received a letter from Hawkins and Ash stating that Monica Hauser is retiring or resigning from the firm effective December thirty-first, um, of twenty-three, and because of that, um, they are downsizing, downsizing, he will not be able to handle our, um, auditing services for the upcoming school year. So, um, we put out an RFP, a request for proposals that went, um, it's gonna be published in the Courier this week and the following week. It's on our website, we'll be reaching out to some auditors, um, trying to get some good data. So I think the RFP should be in your packet, so if you have any questions, you can let me know. I'll keep you guys updated though, I said.
All right, any questions? Thank you. Brings us to Mr. Henny to speak on the Wisconsin Education Convention.
Yep, so next week is the Wisconsin Education Convention. Um, I did put, uh, handout at each of your, uh, seats tonight when you arrived. And this goes through the agenda for the four-day convention. Um, it's really kind of the premier professional development event for, um, educators and board members. And I know, uh, it got, you know, a little bit, um, we went away from it a little bit through COVID, but it is back now and they're, they're getting, you know, big-name speakers and it's a good opportunity to hear from other school districts and other educators and what's working well and those sorts of things. So I just would encourage everybody, because I know everybody has a busy schedule and it's hard to get away from work. But if you can get down to the convention at some point in time this year or next year, uh, it's really a great opportunity to do so. Um, Charlie's going down this year, I'm going down, a couple other are going down as well. So we'll have some, some folks there from, from Waterloo, but we would encourage all of you to take a look at it, uh, in the future as well. And if there's something on there that, uh, you think is really interesting and you want to make sure one of us goes to, we'll kind of split our forces and make sure we try to get to everything that, um, we might benefit from going to coordinate. So, let us know.
Sounds good. All right. Moving right along. Brings us to the approval of bills and vouchers. Are there any open questions in regards to the treasurer's report listings of expersions for, through, excuse me, December thirty-first or the district receipts for the month of December?
I have one. Could have brought it up, but I was seeing here. Let's see, it'd be the second page. Treasurer's report, and it goes down N S F and bank fees, twelve thirty-one, a hundred and nine thousand.
I looked at the wrong line, that's just, that's just the F T, that's my bad.
Okay, I was gonna say non-sufficient funds of a hundred and ninety thousand, that's quite a fee.
Sometimes I look at the lines, if there's a, but yeah, that's like Dean Health is in there.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's, I'll get that fixed.
So that, that would primarily be health insurance contributions that would toward, or, and, uh, withholding as well that would go towards Dean Health?
It's, who would be electronic, basically.
All right.
Sometimes we print it back and sometimes we pay online. Yeah, that's what that is. Sorry about that.
No.
Goodbye.
Thanks. And W R S of all that, that's the retirement fund?
Mm-hmm, yep, that's pretty average.
All right.
Any other questions? Hearing now, I look for a motion. Here we go. Now to look for a motion. I will approve the Treasury report of superintendent listing of disbursement through December 31st, 2023, and review of district receipts for the month of December. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Setsz, seconded by Mr. Crave to approve all three documents as presented. That will be a roll call vote.
Crave, yes.
Quammy, yes.
Quammy, yes.
Snyder, yes.
Yurgis, yes.
Quammy's, yes.
So it's yes.
Alright. Motion carries on a seven-o vote. Bless you. Legislative updates. Are there any legislative updates to share, Mr. Hennig or board members? Okay. Moving along. Announcements. I guess I was picked up on the sophomore class chili supper coming up. So if you get a 10, please do.
So what time would that be?
That's a great question. I can go through it quickly so I didn't...
Happens usually before the basketball game. Last year, when the sophomore class horse racing had started around 5:30.
Yeah, I think 5:30 or 6:00.
Okay. So don't want to come and find out they're all out, that I'm hip. But I'm angry the rest of the night.
Good point.
Alright, on to public input. Is there anyone who wishes to provide public input this evening? Moving right along. Takes us into new business. Action item A, staff positions. There's one position presented for employment. Mr. Michael Berry for Intran School Science. Any questions in regards to this recommendation for employment? If none, then we'll look for a motion.
I will approve the staff position as presented.
Okay, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Setsz, seconded by Mr. Yurgis. For approval, all those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries on a seven-o voice vote. Brings us to action item B. Seat limits for open enrollment students. Just had a presentation by Mrs. Armatrow explaining how she goes through the criteria and the recommendation. It's recommended that the seat limits be set for the district for the 2024-2025 school year.
I will approve the seat limits.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Mr. Setsz, seconded by Ms. Quammy, to approve the seat limits for open enrollment students as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries on a seven-o voice vote. Brings us to action item C, the 2020-20, excuse me, the 2024 summer school dates. We have dates presented in your board informer packet. It's like June 10th to July 3rd. If you go through all programs, any questions in regards to the dates of summer school?
When's high school longer than...?
They start.
I think it's got started right away. Yeah. Sometimes they finish sooner or later. It just depends on the student.
On the migrant summer school program, when do we get those dates or find out information on the grant funding?
Well, I don't know how to say this politically correct as possible. We're waiting on the DPI, so as soon as they tell us, we'll know. But they're not all that organized, and they lost that person again, so.
Okay. Because we typically have decent attendance with that program?
It's a very nice-sized grant, so we're able to serve kids very well. So yeah, it's been a program that Waterloo's had for 30-plus years. I think we're the only district in the state of Wisconsin that's run that program as long as we have. We were the coordinator for it the last several years. So yeah, it's, it just depends on the federal funding. The DPI is still figuring their end out.
Alright. We'll make a motion to approve the 2024 summer school dates as presented.
I will approve the 2024 summer school dates as presented.
Would you like to second? Because Mr. Yurgis put that motion out just before.
Sure.
Alright, I've got a motion on the floor by Mr. Yurgis.
I'm going to turn up my hearing.
Yeah.
You know, that's speed power.
I didn't talk for it, sorry.
That motion was seconded by Mr. Setsz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries on a seven-o voice vote. Discussion item D. As aforementioned here, Scott Brown with Neola has accepted the executive director of operations position, which has, I guess, put a squeeze on us scheduling for future policy readings. But he is going to stay through this with us as he started it, which is a good thing. So we have to work at his schedule. There's time frame to get this thing closed out. Any other discussion in regard to that regard? Here we go. Moving right along. Takes us to action item E. The first reading of the 7,000 policies. As stated in the presentation, you can see that there's a number, it's like four of them that are crossed out. 7510, 7540.01, 7540.03, and 7544 have been crossed out. We're waiting for an updated version of that policy to bring into the board for a first reading. Any discussion on the first reading of the 7,000s? I look for a motion to...
I will move.
Got a motion by Mr. Crave, seconded by Mr. Yurgis, to approve the first reading of the 7,000 series policies. All those in favor? Post? Motion carries on a seven-o vote. Action item F is the second reading of the 3,000s and 6,000s policies. As laid out again in your board informer packet, we have 31, 20.08, 3217, and 3281 that have been crossed out again for further clarification on the policies as they are in the second reading. Again, just as a reminder, we do a first, our current policy dictates we do a first reading approval, a second reading approval. But then at the end, we'll do one final approval to approve all of those policies that fail smooth, to make them for the district to render them effective.
And the intent is to bring those cross-out policies to the final reading. We've eliminated dates of new clarification.
Agreed. Any further discussion, or we'll look for a motion?
I will approve the second reading of policies as presented.
I'll second it.
Got a motion to approve the second reading of the 3,000s and 6,000 policies by Ms. Quammy, seconded by Mr. Yurgis. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries on a seven-o voice vote. Brings us to action item G, building and grounds meeting regarding the master plan. As laid out here, we're looking to schedule a meeting to further discuss the master plan for facilities for the school district. Do we have a potential date in mind we're looking to try to schedule on? Building and grounds people?
Do we allow to do it before the monthly meeting?
I'm available every Monday, Tuesday, Monday.
Okay. And I could certainly make something work there.
February 14th, February 15th.
That's our regular meeting, so would we like to go on to 12th? Alright, so February 12th, 6:00 PM work, 3:30.
I'm done at 3:30, so I appreciate that.
Can we leave that a little bit open? Because I'll talk with point of beginning and see if the representative can be there, and they might have to work around. These guys will, but you guys can at least hear from them too that night.
I think that would be beneficial.
Yep.
If that's the only one, or are there more out there that...?
Well, you could go with more, but I think it'd be nice just to hear from one, so you kind of know what you're looking for and getting into. But whatever you guys want to do is fine.
Alright, so target date is going to be February 12th. And we will hear, we'll wait to hear from Mr. Hennig to set the official time. Alright, we don't need a, we don't need a motion to set that date, so we'll move along. Takes us to discussion item H, where we need to set a date to review the 7-9 letter with district attorneys. I would say as the board, we should sort of the better. Then we get to hear from counsel, and we can react as needed. Did our attorneys provide any sort of guidelines, Mr. Hennig, on how quickly we could do this, or...? Assuming they have schedules that they would have to...
Yeah, right. We'd need to work around their schedules, but I think, like you said, the 7-9 letter.
So I would certainly like all board members to attend if at all possible.
Can we go for the first week of February? Would that be feasible?
Yes. Can we go any sooner?
Yes.
I hate that we have an open issue out there. We need to meet and be educated and take action as required.
Obviously, this week is all probably going.
Yep. No longer this week?
No.
The 18th, next week.
I'll be gone the last two weeks, then the 22nd of January, the 3rd or 2nd.
And I'll be gone the 17th through the 24th, actually, the 26th, if I have a...
Next week, though, it's good.
So we got 13th and 16th?
Yep. I won't go either day. I'll make it work.
I will be out on the 15th, but I can do the 16th. I think the 16th, maybe the night on the 16th. Sorry, what did you count up?
Okay. 16th?
I can't believe it.
It's the 15th or 16th, we would have six people out of seven. It's the best we can do. And after that, we push to February. Because of traffic plans.
Well, you're going 15th, right? You're going 16th?
Yep.
Either of you have your heart dead set on this?
It's fine. Doesn't matter.
16th, then?
Well, let's request and see if we can make the 16ths happen.
I'll have all seven. I'd be really good there.
Yeah.
Do, but I also am sending out a letter for my mom.
Well, I agree. It's not like we're only going to have one meeting in this. I anticipate. I would like to.
We can make it, but then, I know it's not very fast, but we can make this work. It's not the second.
February is unfortunate.
February is unfortunate.
Me too.
Is there anyone strongly opposed to not trying to at least get the initial meeting on the 16th? On the books. If the attorneys can't meet, it's a moot point, right? Then we have to push it to February. Is there anyone opposed to that? So can you request to see if we can meet on the 16th? And let's just set a secondary date, since we're all sitting here. If that doesn't work, what was the date you all had stated? That we're there, so...
1/16 or 2/5.
1/16 or 2/5, or you have it. And then can you, if you confirm that, if you confirm a time, I'll assume people are generally available after 5:00, 5:30, 6:00, some of them. Moving along. Discussion item I, school board election update. Mr. Crave will be running to represent area two, and Mr. Jeremy Dolphin will be running on opposing area three. And that leaves us, Mr. Setsz, riding off into the sunset, unfortunately. How many years, Jim?
I don't know. Too many to call.
Too many to call.
17, 16, 18.
Alright, well, as it says in here, obviously, you're still going to attend some meetings, but we certainly appreciate your service in the district for those many years that you've walked. Moving along. Discussion item J, the WASB resolutions for the convention. So we have our delegate, Mr. Charlie Crave. And he can certainly share how this voting goes and how fun it was last year. But if you would like to provide him direction on how to vote on the resolutions, by all means, feel free to let him know.
You will see the resolutions at the back of your packet. I have received resolution packets, packet from the, as a delegate. The opening sentence is something on the order of, I have the wrong page here. Oh, some of you may remember, blah, blah, it was brutal. We are not taking amendments. We are not taking wordsmithing. We are not taking wise guy comments. I wonder why I should be there. But in a nutshell, they're going to move it through. They cut down the number, and they're really focusing on getting resolutions through. I have a big hallelujah to that. So I will be there, sitting in the front row, so I can maintain my focus and attendance, and hopefully, it will not waver from the state committee's intentions. So I look forward to representing the Waterloo School District there. If any of you have any opposition to any of these resolutions, this would be a good time to say, say that, so we as, I would know how to vote. But at this juncture, I plan to vote in affirmative of all those resolutions as presented.
Any board members that would like to voice a, a voice of opposition to any of those resolutions?
If any of you would care to attend in my absence, you may twist my arm.
Well, Charlie, I don't see anybody jumping up and down to do that for you, so we're going to lean on you to take care of it. Alright, next discussion item on the CPI personnel, personal, excuse me, personnel committee meeting. Again, looking to set some meetings. So those committee members on the personnel committee calendar, is there a targeted time we want to look at to get those set, or all yours?
Well, being chairman and being retired, I got a lot of dates, but I know the other people that are on the committee are probably working, so what works for you?
Bill, what works for you?
I worry. I think it does already work.
I'm very flexible on those dates, so you want to shoot a date that... I assume you want it to be after her vacation for a little bit?
And then he has one too, so right after me. So what about 4:00 or 7:00?
Sure. So to be cognizant of the process, if there's a meeting, the committee is going to bring that to the board, Brian, so we have to factor in the board meeting to take those for approval. If you're looking to do it in March, does that?
Um, that should work, yes.
February 7th?
Yep.
Good times.
February 7th, word? Time?
I, I can't, can't remember. 5:30? You want to do 5:30? So can you do 5:30?
Yep.
Can you do 5:30? 5? I could do 5, 5:30. Are you guys?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll be there, so for me, there would be better. Okay, let's do 5. Perfect.
Okay, 2:07 at 5:00 PM.
Will that be in the district office or here?
You want to do it in your office or you want to do it?
Um, yeah, let's do that.
District office?
All right, moving right along. The discussion item L, administrative contracts. As noted here, January is the month that the contracts will be reviewed by the school board, according to state statute. You need to provide notice to administrators regarding employment for the next contract, period. We do have a closed session scheduled for discussion, given the sensitive nature of those discussions. So unless, as the board feels, they don't have to go into a closed session to make a decision, I would recommend we go into a closed session to have that discussion.
Did you make that motion, or?
Uh, we don't need to make a motion. We can forego the action on the administrative contracts. Again, just as a point of reference, we go into closed session, have a discussion, we will come back into open session, and then take action in open session.
Is this just for administrators or also administrative support?
Just for administrators.
Okay. So I will make the motion to move into a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 1925 here in Board Parents' Seat for the three under listed below in your, in the agenda. Is there a second to that motion?
I have a second.
Okay. Motion by myself, seconded by Ms. Cummings, let the time show 7:24. That is a roll call vote.
Crave, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Cummings, yes.
Schneider, yes.
Yurgis, yes.
Cummings, yes.
That's yes.
So that motion carries on a 7-0 vote. We are in a closed session. We'll take a 10-minute recess, allow cameras to tear down, and we'll start that closed session.